And we will open our meeting. Every year, we have the opportunity to have one of our superstar contributors give us an update on little things that people just don't appreciate many times, and that is our pooled investments update. So we have Jeff Sterns, City Lieutenant Treasurer, who is going to do that for us today, and his talented skill set that he brings with him, which is beyond AV. Okay, there we go. Our pooled investment.
You scared me for a minute there.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. As the mayor said, every year about this time, we do an annual update on the pooled investment fund. This year, we will do that as well, and also talk a little, just a little bit about the pension funds. So with that said, there are really three large sources of assets or financial assets that are related to the city. The single largest is the pension funds and the deferred comp fund between the general, police, fire, and deferred comp funds. That's over $1 billion at this point, or at the end of September, at the end of fiscal year 20. Pooled investment fund, which is mostly what we'll talk about today, is $546 million as of the end of the fiscal year. That includes most of the city's operating funds, reserve funds, Lakeland Electric, water and sewer, all the operations of the city generally. And then there's a small amount of money that's invested slightly differently for some of our long-term funds, such as the cemetery, survivor's benefit, public improvement endowment fund. That's about $27 million in assets, so relatively small compared to the other two. This is just a table that kind of goes over that as well with some of the particulars. Just, as you all know, the pension and retirement funds are administered by the pension boards, the three different pension boards that we have for police, fire, and the general plan. Those boards generally invest those monies through outside managers, and they do that on the basis of investment policies that each of those separate pension boards adopts. And those funds, given that they're long-term in nature, they arrest in it, they, excuse me, invest. There's a slip for you. They invest in a diversified set of assets, including equities most notably, because they're long-term, as well as bonds, real estate, and alternative investments as well. So we won't talk a lot about that one today. The other, the miscellaneous funds are also long-term in nature. They're not pension assets, but they're long-term in nature. They're also invested in a diversified set of assets similar to the pension funds. They're invested under an investment policy that was adopted and approved by the commission and administered by the finance department, but invested through outside managers. So that leaves the pooled investment fund, which is different. It has a different purpose. It's not for paying long-term pension benefits. It's not for some of these other long-term, long-term funds and reserve funds of the city. Its idea, its purpose is to provide liquidity and income for city operations. So it's invested differently. Managed by the finance department through an investment policy that the commission has adopted. Most recently, I believe, we updated it in September of 2019. And it is not invested in equities. It's only invested in cash equivalents, like bank deposits, money market funds, things of that nature, as well as short- to intermediate-term bonds. So what does that portfolio look like for the pooled investment fund? First, in terms of the pooled investment fund, how big is it? You can see where, how large it is, and that it has grown. This is a chart that goes all the back, all the way back at the fiscal year 2001. It's grown up to be $540 million, commensurate with the increase in the size of the operation of the city. The other thing to note about it is that during the course of the year, its size does not vary by that much. It's not like it goes up and down by $100 million. It has a range of less than $100 million from high to low, and that provides investment opportunities to invest out along the yield curve a bit, because that asset base is very stable. And this is just the same graph looking at that stability over time. It has grown over time, as I mentioned, but also the highs and lows kind of bracket that growth. It does not swing wildly. So what is it invested in? This is how it's invested by kind of asset class. Cash equivalents at the end of the year, which is one of our lower points for cash equivalents, was about 17%. That's your basic liquidity of the fund at any given point in time, such that you don't have to sell the rest of the assets unless you want to. U.S. government guaranteed back debt, basically Ginny Mae bonds, was about 2%. Federal agencies, another 18%. Municipal bonds, 6%. Corporate bonds, 17%. Commercial mortgage-backed securities, about 13%. And then asset-backed, asset-backed bonds, 27%. And if you have questions along the way, which I was remiss in saying at the beginning, please interrupt me and ask. So this is what that portfolio looks like by size. Obviously, cash equivalents, which are the, again, the money markets, the bank deposits, things of that nature, that was $78.4 million on September 30th. And then you can see all the other bond positions that were in the portfolio, the highest being about a $10 million position, and going on down from there, literally not including cash equivalents, 229 different bond positions. So the point, you can see the maximums and the minimums. The point here is that we're not loaded up on any one thing. Lots and lots and lots of smaller positions. This is a year-to-year comparison, and it shows you what we're invested in by rating. The current portfolio is on the right. Last year at this time is on the left. You can see it goes down from AAA assets to AA-rated assets, single A-rated assets, triple B-rated assets, and other. And you can see that that's changed a lot during the course of the last year, and that's a direct result of what's going on with COVID. Lots and lots of positions have been downgraded to below triple B, and that's consistent with where we are in our portfolio. And that's likely to go back the other way once COVID starts to go away, but for the time being, that's what the rating composition of the portfolio looks like. This is mark-to-market. Mark-to-market, as you know, is a non-cash adjustment that we make to the financial statements at the end of the year. The difference between cost and market value of the assets, you can see where it was at the end of last year. It dropped significantly during the course of this year. Again, that's as a result of COVID. Asset classes such as asset-backed, mortgage-backed securities, and some corporate debt, the market values have been depressed dramatically in the recent last three to six months, and we would expect that to start reversing itself, which it already has. As we've moved into this fiscal year, it's already climbed back up by $10 million, but that's something that we're watching very, very carefully to make sure that it does bounce back. And that's kind of one of the advantages of what I talked about earlier in the portfolio, that most of these assets don't move, so we're not compelled to sell them when the numbers go down, and we can wait it out. And that's, we're going to be watching this very closely as we move into fiscal year So investment performance. That pooled investment fund earned about 3.87% during the course of the fiscal year. That's about $21 million in investment earnings that went back into the budget. Both those numbers are lower than last year, one full percentage point almost, and about $4 million below last year, but they're well above the index that we compare it to. So during the course of the year, a couple things happened. Number one is, as COVID hit, we made a conscious decision to move lots and lots of our assets into cash equivalents. And as you may all know, that short-term investment rates are very, very low. That was important to do for liquidity, not knowing what impact COVID was going to have on city operations ahead of time. Fortunately, not as dramatic as it could have been, but we wanted to make sure that we had lots and lots of liquidity just in case. But when you're in a cash equivalence, that means you earn less. So that's total pool earnings, the $21 million I told, talked to you about. Still very healthy, not as good as last year, which was kind of a record year, but still a significant inflow and revenue source for the city budget each year. As I mentioned, that 3.87% that we earned is above the index that we compare ourselves to, an earnings index of 1.77%, so we were literally more than two full percentage points above that, but nevertheless, lower than last year.
Jeff, what's your target that you're shooting for? What do you guys budget off of?
What do we budget off of? It depends. We're very conservative when we do the budget. I don't know what we budgeted last year or this year.
So even at that, this year, you're still ahead, because you budget conservatively. Thank you.
So this is just the long-term picture of how we've done on pooled investments. The green line is that earnings index that we compare ourselves to and that we want to beat, and the blue line is what we actually earn from year to year. And you can see we're well above that, but this year was lower than last year. If you, going back, if you subtract the difference, say, how much were we above or below that index in any given year, you kind of get this chart. Blue is good, means we've exceeded the index, and we've earned, we've overperformed. The red would be that we underperformed. And so there was a period of time back in the early 2000s when we underperformed, but lately, we've overperformed by a significant degree.
Jeff, quick question. What was the change from those years, from a trend of underperforming to?
We were in a very conservative, government-only bond portfolio with very, very few positions, and we expanded the asset classes that we were allowed to invest in. It moved out of that. So one thing I mentioned to you is that, you know, we earned less this year than we did last year. This is a chart of interest rates from the beginning of fiscal year 20 to the end of fiscal year 20. The blue line is the 30-year treasury bond. The red line is the 10-year treasury bond, and the green line is one-month LIBOR, which is basically short-term interest rates. So you can see that they declined dramatically as COVID hit. It remained at very low levels. A lot of that has to do with Federal Reserve Bank action, and we're expecting it to stay at the lower level, and the Fed has pledged to keep it that way for probably a couple years. One interesting thing to note is that, at the beginning of this year, you could earn more by keeping your money in cash, which is the green line, than you could by buying a 10-year treasury bond. Now, that's reversed itself, but there was an inverted yield curve at the beginning of the year, and it didn't hurt you much to be in cash. It hurts you a lot now to be in cash, because literally, cash rates are maybe 15 basis points, a little over a tenth and a half of a percentage point is what you earn with money that's in cash. And even if you want to buy the 10-year treasury bond, you're at 70 basis points, seven tenths of one percentage point. So I mentioned that I wanted to do a little pension commercial. I showed you what the assets look like for the pension funds and the deferred comp funds for our retirees and our employees when they retire. This is a chart of the S and P 5 during the course of the fiscal year. When we began the fiscal year, and remembering that the pension funds are more, at least 60% of their assets are generally in equities and other things that often move with equities, and during the beginning of the fiscal year, everything looked great. The stock market was going up. Then come February, March, February into March, as you all know, the stock market collapsed. At that point, we, because I sit on the general plan pension board as well, we were sitting, looking at the numbers and wondering how low they were going to go. We were running scenarios to say, hey, what if we're down 15% for the year? What's that going to mean for city and employee contributions next year when it catches up to us? And our most optimistic case was a 0% return. Well, obviously, the numbers bounced back dramatically, and all three pension funds exceeded their actuarial required rates of return of 7 and 1/4 and 7 and 1/2%, so we ended the year in a good place, and certainly much better than we thought we were going to end it, when, in the middle of the year, when we were looking at the numbers. But I wanted to remind you of something that we did last year. You remember, we came to you as a city commission in November and December and asked for permission to issue pension liability reduction notes, notes that we issued to the market to generate proceeds to deposit in the pension funds. We went, you gave us permission to do that. We went ahead and did it. We issued those notes in early March of 2020, coincidentally, just as the market was crashing dramatically. We actually sent those proceeds to the three pension funds on April 1st of 2020. And you can, we, and the amount that each one got was basically benchmarked to be about half the unfunded liability of each pension fund, and you can see the amounts that were transferred. So now, fast forward, fortuitous, the timing was, was very lucky and fortuitous. The pension funds invested those monies shortly thereafter, and from that, when they got the money in April till the end of the fiscal year 2020, they earned about 24% on that money, because that caught the upswing in the market. And that actually contributed somewhere, depending on which pension fund you're looking at, between 1 and 3 full percentage points of their annual return.
That's mighty good timing, sir.
Yeah. Sometimes it pays to be lucky. It often pays to be lucky. And then the last thing to note is that, if you recall, by virtue of borrowing at a relatively low rate of 2.45% and avoiding paying in our unfunded liability payments over time at a much higher rate, we're able to save some money in the budget each year, about $1.8 million per year, about $1 million to the city and $800,000 to the employees in the form of reduced contributions that have to go into the fund. So as we struggle with the budget, that's obviously helped as well, as well as the nice return we were able to get. And that's.
Excellent work. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sterns. I know for the number of years I've sat here and hear your pretty much review of how well we do or do not do. I'm really, I guess, somewhat surprised to know how well we did, depending on the COVID pandemic that we had to deal with, but I was away a lot of the part of the week attending board and trustee meetings for FLC, and then them giving us a report, as you're doing with us today, share with us how well, how we, how we did not do well, but we did very well. That particular organization, as well as here in our city, doing well as we did, you know, considering COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm, I was just surprised, you know, to see how, you know, the returns on investment and things that we thought we may have not seen to be as well, did very well, both when I heard the report that a part of the week last week from that group, and hearing you now before say the same kind of thing. What do you attribute that kind of thing to? Is it, is it because you, is it because of things we have already in motion, and even though the market fails in some respect, or what?
Well, I mean, I think one of the things I tried to point out was that, because of the nature of this fund and the stability of the assets, we don't need to panic. We can ride things out. We don't have to do panicked selling so that we can pay our bills next week. We have a ton of liquidity in the fund. We have more liquidity if we do need to sell things, but we're not forced to sell things. And that's a huge advantage.
And that was one of the things I, I think the investors was telling us, you know, let it ride out, ride it out, you know, because if you let it ride out and the things have already placed, we should see, you know, the return being hopefully, as we see here now.
For the pension funds, you can just imagine, imagine if you had to, had to have liquidated your assets to pay pension, pension benefits back in February or March, you would have taken enormous bath on assets.
Yes.
But then you fast forward, you know, no more than four to six months later, and they've made a, not only have they recovered what they lost, but made a healthy return to boot. That's the advantage of having long-term funds and having funds that have liquidity that are not required to sell.
Thank you.
You ended the year at 17% cash equivalents.
Yes.
What was your maximum percentage mid-year that gave you some flexibility?
I'd have to go back to look at the maximum, but roughly, if you looked at that number like five days earlier, one of the things that we do for the, in the city is that we make our principal payments on all our debt on October 1st. That means you send a whole bunch of money to your trustees, who pay the debt on your behalf, three to five days beforehand. So three to five days before that 17% that I showed you, that number was not 78 million, it was over 100 million, and we were in the 24% to 25% range.
Other comments or questions?
Just a comment. You know, they always say it's better lucky than good. I say best is lucky and good, so.
Yeah, which is exactly what you do.
We're blessed.
And we thank you.
We're blessed. We just don't know how blessed we are sometimes.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for what's anticipated annually to be a robust report, and we really appreciate the work behind it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, we are going to celebrate a wonderful accomplishment, and especially in light of 2020, where we are reminded again how important accreditation in law enforcement is and the many, many years that our police department has been so. And so Chief Ruben Garcia is going to come up and talk about the reaccreditation award from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And crew?
Brought enough to carry the plaques back. Well, good afternoon. We wanted to come by today and let you know that we have received a reaccreditation in both our law enforcement functions as well as our communications center. As you probably know, the communications center has to answer to over 200 different sites that they have to prove compliance in, and law enforcement has over 460 other compliance sites that have to prove that throughout the year, we measured up to those standards. So this is the team that kind of marshals that along throughout the year, starting with Assistant Chief Lehman, Lieutenant Thompson, Sergeant Strong, Mrs. Donato, and Mrs. Allison. And this is kind of a fluid thing that goes throughout the year. It is very a fluid body, clearly is. Throughout the year, policy continues to change, and these folks are charged with one of their many duties, that duty being keeping up with those policies and making sure we adjust and change those as we've seen changing times throughout the country. So again, we just wanted to have an opportunity to come over and let you know that both sections has been reaccredited, and we'll be pushing forward to the next four-year test when they come back around.
All right.
Take a picture. Don't even think you're going to go that quick.
We've got to get a picture. We can't.
He's up.
this for us, and so we'll start with residential and then go to commercial.
Looks like the residential is the first up today.
I don't know if you've seen this house. It's located at 1206 East Edgewood, Edgewood Street Drive, I mean, and it was recently renovated professionally, and it looks really, really good at 1206 East Edgewood Drive. Lots of color, containerized plants, all that, and the owners of the house are Shane and Cindy Willis. I don't know if they're here today. Do they want to see them?
The doors appear.
I don't see Shane.
We'll get it to them.
I'll make sure they get a copy of this, and I'll put a sign on the road on my way home. I live like two blocks from the place. How convenient.
Okay. The second one we have here is the, what happened at the Plantation Square Publix about a year and a half ago? They expanded the store and really modernized it, and at that point, the landscape was fully renovated too professionally, perfectly maintained, as you can see, beautiful trees, it's a great job and a real benefit to our community, as Publix is anyway. We certainly thank them for all the financial help they give to our parks and rec projects too. So I particularly like the silver buttonwood shrubs there. They're gorgeous native plant. So is there anyone here to receive this award today?
All right. And the silver buttonwood plants would be, which ones?
You don't see them in this picture. They're a beautiful silver shrub that's native to Florida, and it's really striking out there.
Thank you.
Just a really great job here. So we got a picture in here.
Wonderful. We've got a team.
Appreciate that.
There are no proclamations today, and that takes us to the committee reports and related items, and we'll begin with municipal boards and committees. Chairman Madden will take that as our commissioner representative.
Thank you, Mayor. The municipal boards committee met via go-to meeting. Stephanie Madden, Chair, and Mayor Bill Mutt, Commissioner Sarah McCauley were present, along with Commissioners Bill Reed, Chad McLeod, and staff. The meeting was called to order at 8:25 a.m., and the purpose of the meeting was to receive an act upon the following recommendations. For the zoning board of adjustment and appeals, there was a recommendation from Matthew Lyons to appoint Tanisha Mayweather and Zach Miller to three-year terms as regular members, beginning December 1st, 2020, and ending November 30th, 2023. And another recommendation from Matthew Lyons to appoint Brandon Patterson to a three-year term as an alternate, beginning December 1st, 2020, and ending November 30th, 2023. Action was taken by Sarah McCauley, who made the motion. Bill Mutt seconded the motion, and it carried unanimously. The committee discussed the role of an alternate and the appreciation of new people volunteering to serve. So all three of those members are new, and we were excited to have their applications and their interest. The other two recommendations, first is the fire pension board recommendation from Sean Charouse to reappoint Kyle Davis and Christopher Hammond to four-year terms, beginning December 17th, 2020, and ending December 16th, 2024. And the housing authority board recommendation from Mayor Bill Mutt to appoint Don Brown to a four-year term, beginning December 3rd, 2020, and ending December 20, December 2nd, 2024. Mayor Bill Mutt moved to approve the appointments to the fire pension and housing authority. Commissioner Sarah McCauley seconded in the motion carried unanimously. As an informational item, the city clerk announced that employees elected representatives to the pension board and the civil service board. Derek Peck will serve a three-year term in the civil service board, beginning January 1st, 2021, and Tori Bombard will serve a three-year term on the pension board, beginning January 1st, 2021. And the committee adjourned at 8:35.
Excellent. Is there a motion for approval?
Hello?
Second.
Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Unanimously passes. That brings us to the real estate and transportation committee report by Commissioner Reed, a meeting just cooling from happening.
Thank you, Mayor. The real estate and transportation committee met via go-to meeting. Commissioner Bill Reed, Chairman, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Walker, members of Mayor Mutt, Commissioner McLeod, Madden, Sarah McCauley, were all present, as well as staff, and available to view online as well as local cable channels. Called the meeting to order at 2:00 p.m. We had three orders of business. The first was a contract for sale and purchase of City Parcel West O'Brien Stadium to Polk County School Board on September 2017. The city sold Tom Bryant Stadium to Polk County School Board. As part of a transaction, the city granted the school board a non-exclusive license to use several. a non-exclusive license to use several vacant properties immediately west on North Florida Avenue. These would be used as parking to Bryant Stadium. In addition, the city granted the city, the school board, excuse me, first writer refused to purchase these parcels in the event the city at any time included to dispose of these parcels. On June of 2020, the city was approached by adjoining property owner regarding the possibility of a land swap. Pursuant to the writer first writer refusal granted to the school board, the city then notified the school board of the proposal, and the school board expressed interest in acquiring these city parcels. After negotiation between the parties, the city and the school board concluded a contract for sale and purchase of the parcel to the school board. Under the agreement, the city will sell the vacant parcels to the school board for a purchase price of $146,000, which represents appraised value of the parcels as determined by city appraiser reappraisal company. The property is being sold as-is to the parties and will split all closing costs equally. It should be noted that the city also had a license agreement with Florida Southern College, which grant Florida Southern College a non-exclusive right to use the city parcel for parking for the events of Henley Field, subject to the city's right to sell the property. Florida Southern is aware of this pending sales to the school board, and is working out shared use agreements with the school board to provide for improvements and continued use of the parking area for both school board and Florida Southern events. Staff recommended that the city commission approve the contract for sale and purchase the school board for a purchase price of $146,000, and authorize the city officials to execute all instruments necessary to finalize the transaction. Farmer Davis presented these items to the committee. Commissioner Phil Walker moved to approve the sale. Commissioner Franklin seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. The school board of Polk County are planning to improve the site with some landscaping. The second order of business was a Fourth Amendment to lease agreement between Pods Enterprises LLC. This is the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement with Pods LLC, Enterprises LLC, which sought to extend its existing lease terms. Pods sought to extend the lease term for additional five years with one additional five-year renewal option upon mutual written agreement between the parties. The lease term will be retroactive commencing as of December 1, 2020. During the first year of the initial five-year term, annual base rent will be $100,000. Thereafter, each rent will be subject to an annual increase of $5,500 for the remaining four years with the initial lease term, and for each subsequent term thereafter. If exercised, all of the terms and conditions of the existing lease will be retained in full force and effect. Staff recommended that the city commission approve the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement with Pods and authorize appropriate city officials to execute all corresponding documents necessary to approve the specific terms. Ramona Sirianni presented the items to the committee. Commissioner Franklin moved to approve. Commissioner Walker seconded in the term that motion carried unanimously. The last order of business is the Second Amendment to a lease with International Aero Academy Limited. This is the Second Lease Amendment with International Space Academies Aerospace for the hangar and office space located at 3131 Flightline Drive on the south side of the airport. International Aero is being severely impacted by the COVID-19 due to significant reduction in enrollment with both domestic and overseas students. The proposed Second Lease Amendment sought to provide temporary relief to International Aero and provide with its ability to better meet its lease obligations by restructuring several provisions of the existing lease agreement. The Second Lease Agreement term is for five years with a retroactive commencement date of November 1, 2020, and will contain three additional five-year renewal terms upon mutual written agreements of the parties. The monthly base rent for the first two years of the lease is set at $16,808.83. Thereafter, base rent will commence November 1 of 2022 with a subject annual rent to change and the consumer price index not to exceed 3% in any year, with April 20 being the fine base CPI index. The Second Amendment also applied to International as a current rent deposit of $13,480.83 to be passed due rent to assist in the bringing of the current rental obligation current. In addition, the airport agreed to defer 50% of aerospace based rent payment from the months of August and September, totaling $16,808.83. International Aero would be obligated to refer, to repay the deferred rent over an 18-month period with April monthly installments commencing December 1, 2020. In addition, any taxes, as well as any rent due and owing, all of the terms and conditions of the existing lease shall remain in full force and in effect. Staff recommended the city commission approve the Second Lease Agreement with Aerospace and authorize the appropriate city officials to finalize and execute all corresponding documents consistent with the above specified terms. Ramona Sirianni was the presenter to the committee. Commissioner Walker moved to approve the motion. Commissioner Franklin seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. The adjustments will be, it's not much, it says, the, as far as the law knows, the adjustment's only a little bit because it's currently at $17,000 per year. So it's only about less than $200 per year modification. And the meeting adjourned at 2:13.
All right, is there a motion to approve either jointly or separately those committee recommendations?
Want to approve jointly.
Jointly? A second? Second from Commissioner McLeod. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? Yes, ma'am. Just state your name, please, and come to the center podium. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Angela Osho of Polk County Public Schools. I'm just here to thank you, it's not discussion. We appreciate the city allowing us to purchase this property. We'll continue using it for parking for the stadium. As you know, parking is essential to the continued functioning of the stadium. We have had a meeting with Florida Southern already regarding joint use, and I just want to say thank you for working with us.
Thank you, Angela. Any other comments? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Unanimously passes. That brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? That would include the minutes in item 6C1.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Commissioner McLeod. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Unanimously passes. That takes us to the second page of the agenda. We will cease meeting as a commission and begin to meet as an equalization board. And there will be a presentation of lots and clearing from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the point in the meeting where anyone in the audience that may have received a notice from the city stating that the city has either cut or cleared their property and is going to be billing the property owner for those costs can address the commission and ask any questions that they might have, or express any objections or concerns they might have with respect to that charge. The different properties that have been, are being proposed for assessment are being shown on the screen right now. So if you see your name up there, or otherwise, if you know that you received a notice from the city, this is your time to address the commission.
Do we have anyone who is here for the equalization hearing? This would be a time when you address your property in some defense. All right, seeing no one, is there a motion by the commission?
Want to approve?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Reed. Discussion by commissioners?
I'm glad that we're going to start putting these up, so people will have a chance to see them, number one. And number two, if, that way they won't be stuck in the audience and happy to miss them, and come back at a time when they could have probably expressed their concerns and gotten out here much quicker.
Good. Any other comments by commissioners? Hearing none, all the, and any by the audience, I'll just do one more round for conformity purposes. All right, seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? The lots cleaning and clearing for the equalization board is approved as written. That we'll cease meeting as an equalization board and now reconvene as a commission and go to item number 3A, public hearings. And we'll have a second reading from our city attorney, Davis.
So we have one ordinance for second reading and public comment and possible adoption today, and that is Prop. Ordnance Number 20-044, an ordinance relating to solid waste-making findings, reducing compliance time for the removal of debris and overgrowth from private property, provided for severability, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McLeod, and a second by?
Second.
Commissioner Walker. Discussion by commissioners. We had some feedback that this might be a little bit accelerated in terms of the timing for approvals, and that, in fact, people wouldn't have an opportunity to respond. This is well within that window. The fines don't begin immediately. It just helps us accelerate the notification process faster as we go along. Any discussion by the audience? I see none. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Walker.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. 3B, resolutions.
One resolution for public hearing today. That's Prop. Resolution Number 20-049, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida relating to the financing of local improvements with special assessments, adopting findings of fact, appropriating a certain sum, and providing for the love of you of a non-avalanche assessment against each lot abutting Heather Point Drive north of Audeman Oaks Circle in Lakeland, Florida in order to pay for the cost of stormwater sewer system repairs and improvements, providing a schedule and terms for the payment of said assessments, providing for the collection of said assessments utilizing the uniform method of collecting non-avalanche assessments as authorized under Section 197.3632 statutes or other legally available collection methods, providing for severability, providing an effective date. The effect of this resolution, if approved, will be for the appropriation of an amount not to exceed $206,258.92 to be applied towards that improvement project. And as a result of that, then the, all of the lot owners abutting Heather Point Drive beyond the gate to that road would be subject to a non-avalanche assessment or a special assessment, they're commonly known as, in the amount of $706 per year over a period of 10 years. So each year, beginning next November, the property owners along that road will have this charge of $706 added to their tax bill. It will be owed, and the same consequences for not paying your taxes would apply to this $706 charge if not paid.
And city attorney Davis, why is this a little different than just being capricious where people wouldn't want to have assessments like this done?
This is a road and a stormwater system that was previously owned by the city and operated and maintained by the city. It was then converted into a private system. But because of that previous public ownership, as well as the severity of the structural issues they're facing, the staff concluded that this was certainly involved enough public interest and purpose to justify this.
All right, is there a motion to approve by Commissioner Reed, and a second by?
Second.
Commissioner Walker. Thank you, sir. Discussion by commissioners on this. And I know we've all been up to speed on this, talked a little bit about it, the agenda study. Is there any discussion by the audience at all? All right, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, so unanimously passes. That brings us then to, with no Community Redevelopment Agency or City Manager Report, 6A, first reading ordinances by our city attorney once again.
Two ordinances for first reading today. These will be read by title only this afternoon, and then we'll come back for a public hearing and public comment on December 21. The first of those is Prop. Ordnance Number 20-046, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, approving a conditional use to allow bar on property located at 124 South Tennessee Avenue, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Next is Prop. Ordnance Number 20-047, an ordinance relating to the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, making findings, approving the inclusion of certain lands located within the City of Lakeland within the boundaries of the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Once again, those will come back before the City Commission on December 21 for public comment and possible adoption. I believe that we are in resolutions now. Couple of resolutions for action. First relates to the equalization hearing considered earlier in the meeting. That is Prop. Resolution Number 20-050, a resolution relating to assessments determining the necessity for having cleaned and cleared certain properties within the City of Lakeland, providing for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Walker and Commissioner McCauley. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Walker?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimously passes.
Next is Prop. Resolution Number 20-051, a resolution authorizing execution of an amended grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for taxiways A, B, and C to increase federal funds received through the CARES Act at 100% FAA or Federal Aviation Administration funding, and reduce local share for non-federal aviation funding at Lakeland Leonard International Airport, adopting findings, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McLeod, and a second by Commissioner Franklin. And our ever-present Airport Director, Gene Conrad, for our meetings is here for this, the most current of requests. Any discussion by the commissioners? Any discussion by the audience, or questions, comments? All right, this is also a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes. We've done Ms. Lane's report to C1, so we are on C2.
C2, for consideration, is a professional services agreement with DRMP for roadway construction engineering and inspection services for the Lakeland Park Connector project. As you know, you recently concluded the purchase of the roadway for that project. This is a approximately half a mile project that will connect Lakeland Park Drive with Carpenter's Way. That is going to be a two-lane roadway with a 10-foot-wide asphalt pathway on the north side of the road with street lighting and a stormwater drainage system. And with any construction project, you're required to have construction engineering and inspection services. So this will be the engineering firm that will provide those services. Those will include the inspection of the project, the review of all pay requests, invoices submitted by the actual contractor, review of change orders, certification of as-built, the resolution of disputes, interpretation of the contract documents, et cetera. This will be for a not-to-exceed fee of $524,623.62, and that is recommended for your approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Walker, and a second by Commissioner Madden. And this gets us ever closer to this exciting connector road, which will be widely used once it's in place. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Reed.
Greg, what do you think? Is that a pretty good price?
Greg James is going to come to the podium and comment on the valuation of the agreement.
Greg James, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, it's very similar to the price that we brought to you previously for the North Wabash Extension. Actually, slightly less.
Have they done work with us before?
We have. In fact, when we did the Waring Road Extension back in 2010, Dyer Riddle, DRMP, was our firm. And they've also done some design work for State Road 33 Riddle, DRMP, was our firm, and they've also done some design work for State Road 33 and several other projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you also, Greg. I'm just glad to see and supportive of, you know, what has been going on now for, what, couple, two or three years, maybe four years, when we first brought the discussion up to try to connect, you know, that particular part of our community getting over to 98 North and not having to get on I-4 to make that connection, and at least this is almost halfway to the point where we really want to get to bringing that particular portion of our, those residents in that area of our city, at least they can get over to Carpenter's Way, you know, and boom, at Carpenter's Way, you can always maneuver a little piece and you're there on 98 where all the other activity is with, you know, different retail shops and restaurants and et cetera, so I'm glad to see it's coming about.
Excellent. Any other comments by commissioners? Any comments by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Unanimously passes. Thank you very much for that, City Attorney Davis. There is no report from the finance director other than the robust earnings report from the pool that we had earlier, and then we are going to utility, and we just had a meeting at 1 o'clock there, so we're at resolution 1.
And that is proposed resolution number 20-052, a resolution relating to the electric utility, making findings establishing the fuel charge for all customer classes for meters red on or after January 1, 2021, amending time of day fuel charge for applicable rate classes, repealing resolution 5630, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Franklin and a discussion by commissioners. Any discussion by the audience or comments? All right, Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimously passes. That brings us to C1, and Ramona Sirianni is going to make that presentation.
Good afternoon. Ramona Sirianni for the city attorney's office. Just one item, an agreement with PowerCon Corporation for a 15K V-switchgear enclosure for the Highlands City Substation. This will improve and automate load transfers at the substation. At the end of August, the city's purchasing department went out and issued an invitation to bid seeking qualified contractors. Six vendors responded. PowerCon Corporation was selected as the most responsible and lowest-priced bidder with a base bid of $333,950. Upon evaluation, staff did determine that there were some additional adjustments that needed to be made to the bid, which increased the cost $2,425 to that base bid. So the total cost of the project is $336,375. That is included in Lakeland Electric's FYI 21 budget, and this did receive unanimous favorable recommendation from the utility committee earlier today, and we ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner McCarthy. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. C2.
C2 is a proposed purchase and sale agreement, excuse me, with the Orlando Utilities Commission. Back in 1978, the city of Lakeland and OUC entered into a joint operating agreement relating to Unit 3 at the McIntosh Power Plant. As part of that agreement, there was also a purchase of, or a purchase of land related to the operation of Unit 3. The city of Lakeland acquired a 60% interest in that land, and OUC acquired a 40% interest in the land. Shortly thereafter, in 1999, the city then built Unit 5 on 19.22 acres of that jointly-owned land with a verbal agreement to work out a purchase of that, of Orlando Utilities, 40% interest in the land. Those negotiations thawed out based on considerations of price as well as environmental liability, and that simply died into the background for quite a while. In 2019, the city then located McIntosh Gas Turbine 2 on 2 acres of that jointly-owned land. That's more commonly known as the Alpine Unit. And when that happened, the city of Lakeland and OUC committed to resolving the negotiations and the city getting 100% interest in that property. After some time, and also adding some additional lands that it made sense to include into the deal, the city and OUC have agreed on the purchase by the city of 100% interest in 81 acres of the land for a purchase price of $482,358.59. Under the contract, the city is going to accept the sole environmental responsibility for the property dating back to when the city constructed Unit 5 on the property. As far as closing costs, that will be split equally amongst the parties, and this is recommended for your approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Franklin and a second by Commissioner Madden? All right, discussion by commissioners. Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, the appropriation of $482,000, where is that coming from?
Lakeland Electric is going to move money into the budget. I don't believe it is in their current budget, but, okay, our finance directors tell me that that appropriation is going to occur at the next commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Any comments by the audience? All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. It's a wonderful accomplishment to have behind us. That brings us to audience participation. Any audience members that would like to talk on any subject are able to do so. Commissioner Walker has to leave early if he has another engagement for which he prearranged, and that's good. I see no audience participation. That brings us to members of the city commission. Who would like to begin? All right, I will. Thank you, Parks and Recs, for the wonderful 40th anniversary Snow Fest that was held this weekend. That was wonderful to be able to see. I think it's fun to see the enthusiasm that they did. In the Business Observer this month, you might have also seen Snow Way as part of the front page. I don't know if you were aware of this, and this certainly is not within Lakeland, but is interesting now that we get into winter, that we have a snow park called Cool Running that has been developed so that people can actually tube down in Florida. That's right, that's correct. And this is located, I'm sorry.
Dade City.
By Dade City, at Snow Cat Ridge. So it's a tourist attraction that opened November 20, and so, snow is in our blood at this time of the year, you know, so if you enjoyed our Snow Fest, you might consider that Dade City attraction as well. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner McLeod?
Sure, that's where I was going to go, Mayor, and just to thank our city staff and Parks and Rec for putting on Snow Fest. We were out, my family and I, on Saturday night, and I know some of the other commissioners were out there as well over the weekend, but it was, I thought it was well done, and we just had a lot of staff enthusiastic, well attended on Saturday night, and people seemed to really enjoy the experience, so I know a lot of work went into making that happen, so I just wanted to thank the staff for that. I wanted to come back around to the police department on the reaccreditation and just congratulate them. There's a lot of work that goes into that. I remember when, many of you know, my dad was police chief in Auburndale, before that up in North Florida in Livock, and he led both of those agencies through accreditation, and it's rigorous and just, so kudos to the men and women of the police department for that, because that is, that's a big accomplishment. The only other thing I had was, I know we're, as we come into the end of the year and look toward next year, strategic planning, I believe is going to be in February for 2021, and so I would love to see kind of a recap of some of the items that we talked about, initiatives that maybe we started or haven't started, and I may be getting ahead of myself here. Sean, and I'm sure you have that in the works, but just in the next few weeks or even as we get into January, to start preparing for that thought process, and so we're ready and thinking of, you know, what are the things that we want to carry into those sessions in February, so.
So it touched to some degree on where we softened a little with COVID, perhaps, of things that we had in place that we want to continue going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have been developing a tool, and given that this is going to be a shorter, we're not going to have the full year that we would normally have with strategic planning, but we have had staff and OMB specifically working on a tool that we will be getting to the commission in advance of strategic planning, and it's kind of a red, yellow, green light type concept where you'll be able to see, you know, if it's a green light, we've accomplished it, if it's yellow, we've began on it, and we'll have some commentary to go along with that, that should update the commission leading into strategic planning.
That'd be great. Yeah, and I know there's some items that maybe we haven't gotten to yet. It's just because it's, it's been less than a year by the time we gather again, but yeah, that'll be helpful, so thank you.
Excellent. Good suggestion. Thank you. Other comments or commentary?
Mr. Mayor? May I also just add, the Snow Fest comments, I really appreciate it. I also want to thank staff. You all remember when I met with you right after I was named the interim, and it was a frontline staff employee in Parks and Rec that had the idea, and it was a tremendous event for the community, very well attended, but in addition to that, we were collecting canned goods, and so I just wanted to update the commission that we were able to deliver 20, 40-gallon containers of canned goods to the senior orphans of Polk County organizations. So we want to thank all the volunteers that participated and certainly the people who donated the canned goods.
Isn't that great generosity to see? That's wonderful. All right, if there are no other items before us, then we are adjourned. Thank you.